Thank you, Mark. We'll need a roll call to determine if we have a quorum tonight.
Ron and Frue.
Here.
Karen Tepley.
Here.
Art McCarthy.
Here.
McCarthy, I'm so sorry. Art Chambers.
Here.
Kevin Melby.
Here.
Melanie Walters.
Here.
Steve Downs.
Here.
Ryan Cairns.
Here.
Excellent. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes. Once the councils have a moment to review those, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve January 7th's minutes.
Motion from Mr. Melby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Walters. Is there discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Next up, approval of the agenda. Once again, once the council's taken a moment to review, entertain a moment to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion from Ms. Tepley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers. Is there discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight's agenda is approved. Next up, City and Utility Department had reports and concerns. Where's the microphone right now? This side. So I will start with the city clerk. Do you have anything to tell us tonight?
So taxes have wrapped up. If anybody has a tax payment that they still need to make, that can go to the county. And so we will be processing the February reconciliation. Then we also have an upcoming primary election on February 18th. In-person voting has already started in the Parks Office.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Jason Westbrenner.
Okay, from an economic development standpoint, we continue to work with Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation on community development investment grants. We have a fairly significant airport planning effort that's moving forward in conjunction with Bureau of Varinautics. We continue to work towards hotel request for proposals for potential build in our downtown area. And we are working diligently with HUD and the Community Project Funding Grant that the city was awarded to try to move through their process, which is very challenging. I said in the last meeting that we spent literally a couple of months of consistent communication trying to get into an advisor at the federal level with HUD. And we got in with her, and a week later, they changed the program and said, oh, now you're dealing with the state HUD agency. So it's a lot, it's very time-consuming to manage grants and the processes that they require you. But we're sticking with it. So other areas have had good meetings this week with both Buildings and Grounds team and the Streets team. And we are, you'll see tonight in the agenda, we've got a lot of items. We're working to do a better job managing our equipment inventories. And then we are doing a lot of prep and planning work right now for spring. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Jason. Mr. Matt Williams with Zoning.
Just a couple of things. Still working on a couple conditional use permits going out. We're still going through our parcels, getting those updated. Also, calls are coming in already with the warmer weather. Obviously, people are trying to kind of get stirred crazy and want to get projects started. So people are kind of getting ideas of what the regulations are. So we've got a lot of phone calls on that. Also, just kind of working on, we do have an annexation coming up. It will be in next month's planning and March's council. So that's pretty exciting. It's big news, so hopefully a pretty good development plan. So it's exciting for the city. But that's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Mr. Scott Gald, City Utilities and the Fire Department.
Good evening. Just, we went and helped our neighbors on the 18th. Elroy had 100 customers. A pool got hit. Three of us went up for nine hours, helped get them back on. Water main break 20th and 21st on the Cairns Avenue. We've had lots of breaks out there, and that'll be a spot that we look at as a group. Electric, we've got 900 of the AMI meters installed. March timeframe is when we'll start deploying the water AMI. So we'll be putting out a flyer to inform our customers that we're going to have to get in all their basements to get those installed. Continue to work with the Parks and the Street Department on cutting trees, wastewater. Our folks that work with pumps every day, we got in the pool today to look at the pumps in the basement there of how we can work together. And tomorrow, I will be with Mr. Collins at the State Capitol with any two other public power community talking with our legislators about public power.
Mr. Gald, well, I have you. I know at our last Fire Board meeting, when you did your chief's report, the department had been very busy. Have things slowed down at all?
I'm hoping it snows. We've had 35 calls. When I got on 27 years ago, we ran 60 to 80 calls as a paid-on-call department. We ended 2024 with 230, and we're averaging right now one a day. And we had a meeting last night, and our businesses, everybody allows these folks to go and serve the 310 square miles of our county. And I'm hoping that everybody listens and don't burn up, you know, burn their piles right now because the burning conditions are just like what we have in March, April. It's dry. It hasn't snowed. The tall grasses haven't been knocked down. So yeah, we had three on Thursday, I think. So it's been very busy, but numbers are strong over there. We still have 48 members serving that, so things are going good.
Thank you. I'm going to back up. I did not see the librarian, and I missed.
I would just report that our new furnace in the lower level is working well. And over the past weekend, we had a reinvigoration of our 1,000 books, the Forth Kindergarten Challenge at the library for children ages zero to five. We're really boosting this and hoping that it results in improvements in reading readiness and school readiness for youngsters in Richland County. If you couldn't make it out over the weekend, we're having a sign-up that's ongoing, so please come out and see us.
Thank you very much. And with the Police Department.
Good evening. Just a couple of things just to bring up. February 23rd, the Police Department and Sheriff's Department is hosting a K-9 nine-pin bowling tournament, fundraiser for the K-9 units. So come on out. There's still time to get in on the raffles and things of that nature. And that will be on Sunday again, February 23rd. Speed limit reduction request was put in by the Police Department. On Allison Park Drive, we'd like to slow traffic down out in that area. I'm not sure if any of you live out there. But traffic seems to come into town quite, quite fast and leave town quite fast, so we're looking at that. And then I'd like to report that Officer Nathan Fogo has graduated off of FTO. So he is now out on his own. You probably won't see him much. He works 11:00 p.m. to 7:30 a.m. So he's on the midnight shift, kind of where all the new guys start, got to cut their teeth, so to speak. So it's kind of one of those shifts. But we're excited to have him and get him out there working in the city.
Thank you, sir. I don't think I missed any department heads. Looks like we got them all. All right. Next on the agenda, Mayor and Older Persons Committee Commission Board reports and comments and/or items to be discussed at a future meeting. We'll start with Mr. Ron Frue.
Nothing to share tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Karen Tepley.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Tom McCarthy.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mark Chambers.
Just to relay, Jody Mead was going to try and make it for Parks this evening, and she was not able to do so due to some errant dogs. She and I have. So a couple of things, I think one of the things that we're going to be hearing about a little bit later this evening is on the Tobacco-Free Parks Youth for Changes here this evening. Good to see those folks here discussing that. Fireworks deposit has already been made, so that gets us some fireworks for our Thunder Fest. That's already been done. There's a donation from Allied Machinery for $500, so we thought, thanked them for that. Jenna at the office over at Parks is creating some brochures to put up, and they're looking at setting up some partnerships with Phoenix Center and Galaxy Skate Center. So that should be some fun stuff coming along. And looking at Medicare Supplement programs for the Pool Pass reimbursement. And I think that's about it.
Can I add one to you?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I missed one.
And they're beginning to look for summer seasonal workers.
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Melanie Walters.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Melby.
I have nothing tonight.
Steve Downs.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
And Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, next on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report. Ask the council to review. If there are any questions or comments, please ask. He wants the council's head a moment to review the Treasurer's Report. We'll entertain a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report.
Make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Reports.
Motion from Ms. Tepley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby. Any discussion of the Treasurer's Report. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call on that.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Frue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Uh.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Um.
Which is carried.
Okay. Next, we'll do payment of bills. While the council reviews that. The following, the bills presented on this day, excluding any library fund invoices having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee and said committee, having duly investigated and audited these bills hereby make the following recommendation that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions. There are no adjustments or exceptions listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve bills.
Motion from Mr. Cairns. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCarthy. Any discussion of the bills. Hearing none, we do a roll call, please.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Frue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next on the agenda, items for discussion and action. Item five, request from RCHS's Youth for Change and the Partners for Prevention Coalition to develop a model ordinance to support tobacco-free parks. Mr. Chambers briefly touched on this. He is a member of the board. Who's going to lead this one tonight? Okay, then I will. Okay, this has been debated, discussed for a long time. Can we get the microphone? Betsy Raceley.
I think we have youth speakers.
That's what they're going to speak to. Here's what I want from you, Ms. Raceley. Approximately, how long has this been discussed?
The first time it was brought to the Parks Board was in 2020.
Okay, and so this has been reviewed, discussed, maybe we put signs in the park, maybe we do an ordinance. I think there were signs up briefly at the Meyer Building?
Yes. In 2023, the Parks Board put some signs that Dave Frye had on the Myers Building, but they did not stay up there.
So there are no signs up right now?
Correct.
Okay, that's, so let's move the microphone down. And what I'll ask from these young people is if you would just stand and introduce yourselves and then say what you came here to say.
Can they stand up?
They sure should. And just tell us who they are.
Go ahead.
Yep.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Ethan Gald. That's Maddie Huber. And we are leaders of the Youth for Change, of Aboriginal Center High School, a student-led organization, the topic of prevention. So Maddie's handing out to you right now these unfiltered cards. This was a recent project at the high school that we did. All students did it, and it is on how nicotine has affected their lives. So this is a statewide initiative led by a different school this year. But there are some really interesting topics in here on just like how even at the ages of like 13 and 12, the uses of nicotine have affected their lives. So we're here tonight. I'll let you read those real quick, though.
Thank you for that. What we're reading is, Ethan, just explain these cards. They're all handwritten responses from, that's a 13-year-old, that's a 13-year-old, that's a 17-year-old. And it says how vaping and nicotine impacted your life, and it's their handwritten response. And they're actually moving. Okay, Ethan, did you have more you want to say?
Yes.
Please do so.
So we're here tonight to talk about bettering the community and making this place a safer and healthier community in general.
I like Ethan's idea. My name is Maddie. I want to say that we think, it's a fact, that parks should be places of enjoyment, and they should be safe and healthy for all members of the community, especially our kids. But that's largely impossible right now because of littering from tobacco products and secondhand smoke and just a lot of elements related to tobacco and vaping. And we think, the mayor mentioned that ideas of rules have been tossed around, but we just don't think that these are very sustainable, and we need to have something that is more like sustainable and also enforceable. And so we have the mayor's support, and we know that the city attorney is ready to help draft an ordinance, but we really need your direction to help make that possible.
Thank you. Did you have more?
Oh, wait. So as Betsy said, we've been working with the Parks Board since 2020. And so we've worked like lots of steps. They agreed to have signage up. Those last about a month before they were taken down. And it kind of just proved that voluntary measurement is just not suitable in this situation. And then we worked with smoking areas, but overall, that kind of defeats the purpose of what we want to do, which is just a safer and healthier community. And then there was the rule versus ordinance debate where they wanted a rule, but as we've proven before, voluntary just isn't going to work, so we want the ordinance. And then we've spoken with multiple other communities who have the same ordinance in place and who have even larger park spaces that this works for.
We have several draft ordinances and also access to grant money. So if there's any concern about cost to taxpayers or the city itself, we would definitely be open to discussion. And if more funds are needed, we are definitely open to running some sort of fundraising to help fund this ordinance and anything needed. We believe that formal ordinance is the only way to ensure the efficient enforcement and implementation of tobacco-free parks. So tonight, we asked the council to direct the city attorney to begin drafting an ordinance that will ban tobacco in all of our community parks.
So thank you for your time, and do you have any questions?
Well, that's the two of you to do. Keep the microphone, but feel free to sit back home. We have some discussion here. Okay. I'm going to start here. I was, I believe the Safety Committee discussed this. Correct? Correct? Okay, I'll start with Mr. Frue. You heard this. You were in the conversation. Any thoughts you had on what you were told or the discussion that went on in that committee?
I don't think anything beyond what Maddie and Ethan have talked about tonight. They did talk about the amount of research that they had done, extensive amount, talking to other communities, how that was implemented. Talked about the fact that the Richland Center Police Department does not have issues with this. I believe I'm right in saying that, Billy, and what we had talked about last night. And so there were really no red lights, green lights. It was really an opportunity to come to this intersection to make a decision at council tonight.
Okay. Mr. Melby?
Yeah, I guess I can just echo what Ron said. They, you know, came very prepared last night, provided us with a lot of information even before the meeting last night. And several years to come up with that information, apparently. So they're very motivated. It's good to see youth excited about city government and trying to see something to the end before they graduate. And they've done a lot of homework, and I guess I'm happy to support those.
Thank you. Mr. Downs.
I support the cause, too.
Okay, so I'll take just a brief moment. Very impressive, kids, young people. Very impressive. And it's not just the two of you, because I've met more in your organization. And very committed. Impressive, very impressive. And your ability to stand right there and speak to us exceeds that of several 35, 45 people that we've had in front of us. I'm very impressed by that. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, Older Persons, any questions or comments on this one?
Well, you stole my line, but you didn't know you were going to steal my line.
More than one person can compliment people.
No, I'm definitely going to compliment these folks. And for those that are a little bit of casting doubt on our youth today and how influential they can be and how composed they can be, those two individuals who just stood up and the two of them that have joined them back there who haven't stood up yet, which is fine, are examples of what great kids we have in this community. Some of them I know a little bit more closely than others. As a matter of fact, I found out this evening why Mr. Gald was asking if I was still on City Council. Asked my daughter, is your dad still on City Council? Yes, I am, sir. Glad to see you this evening. I'm glad to see all of you this evening. I'm on the Parks Department as a committee member there. And this has been kind of a back and forth with that, with that organization. The one thing that seemed to be the sticking point was the enforcement piece. It seemed to be the thing that we were kind of hung up on. I'm hearing this evening from Officer Jones that he's got his full support behind this, as well as the Safety Committee. And I just want to, again, congratulate you folks for, this is a show of perseverance. This is one of those things where you're like, this is where we want to put our flag in the sand, and we're not going to leave that flag. And so I want to compliment your organization and this contingent of youth, as well as the rest of them that are with that group. So if you're not opposed to it, my hat's off to you.
Okay, Billy Martin just touched on it, but the only real pushback I'd heard was enforcement. And my response to that is just who's going to enforce it? And the answer is obvious, the police. And when people said, well, who's going, you know, if you see somebody smoking, who's going to go down there? And what I said to that is, then why have laws at all? Because if you're going to tell me nobody can enforce it, then go ahead, let your dog off a leash, let's all go roll a joint, get high, and let's shelter. I mean, seriously. I mean, a law is a law. What's the difference? I mean, what's the difference? Are there laws in our parks right now?
Yes.
And who enforces them?
We.
Exactly. So I just saw that one as kind of an unnecessary roadblock, in my opinion. I know some disagree, and that's fine, but that's what I saw. So if the police don't object to this, and we've had, obviously, the persistence is amazing on this. And we have a Park Board member right here who supports it. We have a county police officer right there who also works with partners for prevention. Do you support this?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Mr. Frue.
One more thing that came up during the safety meeting was the fact that, and Betsy, you confirmed this, but I would ask you again, but there are grant dollars available for the printing of the signs and the installation of the signs. So what we decide tonight, as we make this decision, is not fiscal. It's really responding to the students' request to make our parks tobacco-free.
So it's in terms of funding, we would need to have a conversation about what the costs might be, including drafting the ordinance. So that would be after the fact. But if that's a holdup, we can talk about that.
But the grant does provide for that opportunity.
Signage, installation, attorney fees. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so what the request is tonight is for the council not to approve an ordinance at this meeting, but to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion on this. Questions, comments? Okay, then I'm going to entertain a motion for the council to direct City Attorney Michael Wendell to develop a model ordinance to support tobacco-free parks in the city of Richland Center. Motion from Mr. Downs. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby. Is there discussion? Hearing none, I'd like a roll call.
Frue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, excellent work, everybody involved. Okay, next on the agenda, item six, repeal and replace Chapter 40, fixing the boundaries of the wards in the Aldermanic Districts of the city and establishing a single reporting unit. Okay, what brought about the need for this?
All right, so as we were looking at for voting purposes of the city, we have, we all know 12 wards, but there's actually 16 wards. And so Matt and I have done a lot of digging, a lot of talking to the county clerk, to the state Elections Board, to DWA. We've done a lot of research and looking into this and how we can kind of clean up all of our wards. There was a recent redistricting at the state level, and so all of the city is under one state. So everybody's voting on the same state contest. However, within the wards, we have, as we annex in property from the township, they are in a different supervisory district at the county level. And until the county redistricts their supervisory district, every time we annex in, it could be even a parcel, some of them are a well, some of them are a partial lot on 14. It's its own ward. Nobody lives there, but we still have to create its own wards. We're actually up to 16. Matt and I have been looking. We're actually probably going to end up with a 17th one. And so in order to kind of get us until we have the next census, when we can kind of clean all of that up, and the county is on board with us as far as like with Derek, the county clerk, we have plans for cleaning that up. But that's, what, six, eight years away?
Yeah.
And so when we were looking at, as those 13 and 14 were created, they did add them in, but they weren't added to the correct Aldermanic District because 13 will actually go into Aldermanic District four. And then 14, 15, 16 are in one. And so nobody lives there, but we still have to legally have them like set up correctly. And so in order to not have to go through each one of those and correct them, we just said, let's copy what we had before, add in what exists, and correct it all at one time. So nothing will change as far as voting. It'll just clean up our ordinances. It will be legal. It'll, this has already been updated on the GIS for the county. Matt and I worked with the state to make sure that that was updated. And so this ordinance just cleans all that up until we can really dig into it.
Okay, questions for, I'm in. Okay, in this case, this is a very lengthy document. And the last time we actually addressed this, I went into mayor mode and started to read it. And I got a couple of words in, and Mr. Cairns was red in the face, laughing over there, and interrupted me and said, you know, you can suspend the rules and waive the reading. And he teased me about that for six months. So tonight, I'm not going to start reading it. It's available for the city, or the public to view and read on the city website. And what it does is it outlines the boundaries of each ward in the city, where they would go. And it just reads, Chapter 40, fixing the boundaries of the wards and the Aldermanic Districts of the city, history ordinance 555, 1991-13, 2011-9. So I guess if there are no further questions or comments, is there any further discussion or question? And then I'll entertain a motion then to adopt the ordinance to replace Chapter 40 with a new ward designation, and we're going to waive the rules and suspend. Motion for Mr. McCarthy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Okay, number seven, resolution 2025. Are we in the right order? Is this going to be dash 01? Is that correct?
This is, yes.
Okay, 2025-01, combining wards for voting. Please explain this one, Madam Clerk.
All right, so this was kind of in conjunction with the other one, and this is kind of how we discovered some of what had been done incorrectly previously. So because we all vote, most of the voting is the same exact ballot. We've had historically, Richland Center has held essentially 12 elections simultaneously at the community center. It's 12 times the work. Now it would be 16. It's a lot of work for the same ballot to do it 12 times over. And so, and 10 And so, and technically sixteen. And so now we have set it up so that you're voting as much as possible, so this ballot, the last ballot, everybody has the same ballot. It reduces human errors and makes everything much faster. We're only gonna have to use one tabulator for the elections this year, which is gonna save us a bunch of money. It's gonna save us staff time, we won't need as many poll workers, we won't need eight people to sign ballots. This one will have two, April election will have four. That's a lot of savings to the clerk's office, to the city, a lot of time for us, the county, to not have to create twelve of everything. Technically, there was six, there was fourteen, Derek had to program it and pay for it at the county level. We just didn't even have the ballots because nobody actually lives in those four wards. And so this allows us, this resolution, to all vote together as much as possible. If April won, there will be four ballot styles, but generally, most elections, it would be one ballot style.
Questions on that?
Would this just be for the only the the local elections, or this would be including like November presidential election?
So the presidential election, technically, we had tried it, and it made it go much faster. And even though we had some issues with the tabulator that broke, it actually made it much faster and easier because every, before it was if you grabbed the wrong ballot style that had to be kicked out. And this eliminates that human error because everybody has the same ballot, whether you live in ward three or ward six or twelve. And so except for when we're voting for your guys' seats, that's the only time that it would ever matter that we have a different ballot style.
Thank you.
Further questions? Any disagreement with any of this, Mr. Wendell?
No, I think it's a solution to a problem that we shouldn't have had in the first place. It reduces the opportunity for, as the clerk said, human error and thus someone's vote not being counted. I am a huge believer in democracy, and anything that we can do to increase the efficiency and efficacy of our democracy, I am in favor of. So no disagreement here.
Okay, in this case, I will read this, so that is recorded on video as well. City of Richland Center, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero one, resolution to combine municipal wards for voting purposes, whereas the common council of the city of Richland Center recognizes the need for efficient and effective management of electoral processes and in consideration of the benefits arising from streamlined operations, and whereas Wisconsin statutes five dot fifteen six B permits municipalities containing a population less than thirty-five thousand to combine two or more wards containing the same districts for voting purposes, and now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Richland Center, Richland, Toney, Wisconsin, that all wards are hereby combined for voting purposes to share the common polling place, and such combined wards shall use common ballots, and separate returns shall not be maintained for the combined wards at any election, except for separate ballots are required under Wisconsin statutes five dot five eight to five dot six four, in which case separate ballots and returns shall be maintained for any electors of one or more of the combined wards or ineligible to vote for any office or referendum for which other electors in the combined wards may vote, and be it finally resolved that upon passage, certified copy of this resolution shall be transmitted to the county clerk within five days of its adoption, and that this resolution shall remain in effect for each election until modified or rescinded in accordance with Wisconsin statutes. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero one.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. Item eight, poll workers for the two thousand twenty-five elections, again, Madam Clerk.
All right, in your packet, you should have a list of the poll workers. We normally do this every two years. We did have some with the changing of clerks, we've just added, lost, so it's just an updated version. We only have two elections this year, so we'll do this again next year, but this just covers us for two thousand twenty-five.
All right, and you, all of you can see the list of poll workers, their democratic affiliate, or their party affiliation, if known. Are there any comments or questions?
I'd also like to note that there are some council members on there, and they will not be participating in contests that they are being elected.
I was worried about that Rodford guy.
He's not up for election.
That's what the city attorney was just asking me, is Mr. Fruit up, and he is not.
So Karen and Melanie are on, but they won't be participating this year.
Okay, further questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the list of poll workers for two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby, is there discussion? Hearing on all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Item nine, renaming the Richland Center landfill, this came from Mr. Downs. Do you have comments tonight on this?
Well, for those who were not here for the January meeting, I'll make the same presentation that I made then. And I would like to recount the esteemed, our esteemed outgoing president's accomplishments. He took the two percent inflation his predecessor left him to a forty-year record high of nine percent and bragged about reducing it when it started back down. He canceled the border wall construction, started selling off materials, taxpayers paid for it, and he's on the dollar. Then he opened Southern Order to import over eleven million illegal aliens, and these some, maybe many of which are convicts, let out prison or mental hospitals. Then he used taxpayers' money to feed, house, clothe, educate, and entertain those illegal aliens. He got out of Afghanistan in the worst way possible, costing thirteen of our brave servicemen their lives, and giving away a Bagram Air Force Base and eighty billion dollars worth of our best military gear. On day one, he shut down oil and gas leases on federal land and canceled work on the Kieslone Excel Pipeline to protect us from a two-degree hotter climate in the next hundred years. Good job, Mr. President Biden. Oh, I almost forgot, he called the people who supported re-electing President Trump garbage. In honor of these accomplishments and his characterization of the majority of we the people, it is fitting and appropriate to rename and dedicate the President Joseph R. Biden Municipal Landfill.
Okay, questions or comments?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you may.
I decided to prepare a response for this, for this evening, and I'd like to read that now, if I may.
If you may.
In response to the act, or to items for action and discussion, item nine, renaming the Richland Center landfill, fellow Alderpersons Mayor and community members of Richland Center, it is my humble opinion that this topic of discussion and possible action is an exercise in futility and a waste of time and resources for our council to deliberate. We, as elected officials, are to represent the best interests of our constituents while striving to continually improve our city and thereby the citizens of Richland Center. This action item seems contrary to why we are serving in our respective capacities. As I review the reasons that bring us to this item, I perceive a divisive tone, latent passive aggressiveness, sarcasm, rather than objectivity, open-mindedness, and perhaps most importantly, regard for the posterity of the city. In short, the oratory was grilling with partisan political rhetoric. There was no data or research presented toward how this action item would benefit our city economically, socially, politically, or ideologically. Though my time left serving on this body is limited, I believe I would be remiss in fulfilling the duties to which I've been elected to further entertain any more time and effort towards a topic that will surely not produce any benefit to our community, but rather craft more division in a society that certainly needs no more. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Give Mr. Chambers further comments? Okay, hearing none at this point now, entertain. Yeah?
I would just like to say that I echo Mr. Chambers' sentiments. I feel that as elected officials, we are representative of our constituents. This is not a place for our, I guess a good word I would use is soapboxing our own political views. And if we don't know if we have the best interests of our constituents and their opinions in mind, then we should not be presenting those ideas.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to echo Mark and Melanie's statements and say that we are elected here to represent the people, all the people, whether they voted red or blue. And I don't see how this makes our city in any way better, and I feel like it is, again, more divisive than what we need.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, this is an agenda item that's requested by an older person, therefore, at this point, I will entertain a motion to rename the Richland Center landfill.
So moved.
I have a motion, is there a second? Okay, I'll just ask one more time, is there a second? Okay, there is not, so this item will not proceed. Okay, Finance Committee recommendations in action, Mr. Ryan, carry it.
Item ten, sale of Snow Creek Loader Mount Snowblower from Public Works Fleet. Finance met directly before council, reviewed all these items, and Jason has been doing a good job looking at equipment that we are not using. So there is a front mount snow blower that goes on an end loader. We currently have two of them. This one hasn't been used, that Jason knows of, since he started five years ago. So the request is to sell that on Wisconsin surplus. Jason has gathered some data on the amount that it should bring, and just like all items that he puts on Wisconsin surplus, he'll set a reserve on it. In this case, with this particular item, it's gonna set the reserve at ten thousand. So my motion would be to approve the sale of the nineteen ninety-nine Model nine forty-two SI Fair End Loader Snowblower.
There's a motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number eleven, sale of Vernix Skid steer attachment snow blower from Public Works Fleet. Again, finance agreed with Jason, he's done some research on it. This is a snow blower that is not being used, and we don't have the equipment to use it. He'll set a reserve on this one at six thousand dollars and put it on Wisconsin surplus to get rid of it, so we can use the funds for items that we need. My motion would be to approve the sale of the two thousand nineteen Vernix V fifty Model E P E B twenty-five Loader Mount Snowblower.
Again, motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers, is there discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item twelve, purchase of Husqvarna Husqvarna Auto Mower five fifty EPOS Robot Mower. Last summer, Jason had worked with homesteaders downloading one of these units, ran it around the city hall building. It's a robot mower that does not require a person and is out mowing from time to time, had good, a good response from using it. And since then, has decided to use some of the funds from the sale of other equipment that we have to purchase one of these mowers, to start it in our fleet, and see how we can eliminate some of the areas that we're using people and mowers to mow. So my motion would be to approve the purchase of a new Husqvarna Auto Mower five fifty EPOS Robot Mower from a local vendor, up to five thousand five hundred, including the purchase of the mower and installation, using funds from proceeds from the sale of city equipment.
Motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, is there discussion?
I got a quick question about how we're going to surveil that piece of equipment if it's out mowing by itself for people not, and I guess, yeah, I'm directing this to Jason, just wanna find, like, are we gonna hold and keep it in places where we have cameras set up so we have an eye on it, so we avoid any kind of vandalism or destruction of the equipment?
Yeah, so the mower operates on a GPS system, so number one, first and foremost, if somebody picks the thing up, it's got an alarm built in, it's gonna start screaming at you. Number two, it's got a, it's a built-in GPS system because that's how it mows, it's based off GPS. So if you take it and you can't figure how to shut it down, it's when you turn it on and then it is on, we know exactly where it's at. The third thing is, we do, to your point, Mark, have cameras in certain areas in our buildings and grounds, and we would use this in an area where it is, is more, there are more people around. And the third thing is that we would be using it in the evenings most likely, in times where the vast majority of people won't be, would you say, encouraged or enticed to mess around with it. It has the ability to mow twenty-four seven, and so we can program the mower to mow anytime we like, beginning at eleven o'clock at night and stopping at six AM in the morning if we want. So we've got several ideas. It is, granted, a little bit of a new experience for us, but there are numerous buildings and grounds and parks who use the equipment and have been successful doing so. And so the worst-case scenario is we try putting it in, it doesn't perform as we expect, we turn around and we move through a sale situation like I'm moving a lot of equipment now. But we do have reason to believe through the test process that that we can be successful using it and that it, that it will remain safe and not get stolen.
Thank you, sir. Further questions? Okay, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion, and we'll have a roll call.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item thirteen, landfill monitoring services agreement. Jason, do you want to touch on this one?
Sure, sure can. So this item went before the Public Works Committee on one sixteen and then just visited the Finance Committee here earlier this evening. Both committees voted unanimously to move through the proposal to hire My Tech Services Incorporated for monitoring our landfill. We have to do that twice annually as in March and September is mandated by the W D N R. And My Tech has been our service provider since two thousand sixteen. Last year, the service cost twenty-seven hundred. This year, they estimated it at nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. We did receive multiple quotes for the service, you can see those on your screen, ranging from ninety-nine fifty up to thirteen seven fifty. I've had conversations with all of these vendors. My Tech is very well-equipped and does an excellent job, highly professional. So our recommendation is to approve an agreement with My Tech for the landfill monitoring for this year at a cost of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
That'll be my motion.
Motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Q, item fourteen, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash two, W E D C Community Development Investment Grant for Wild Honey Collective LLC, Jason?
Sir, thank you. So we've been working for a number of months now with Tony and Brian McCarville and their LLC, which is Wild Honey Collective. They had purchased the former Gables Building and have been working very hard on a business plan and which would entail a complete remodel for a new business to go into that building. So we began looking for opportunities where we could match that project with Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation and their Community Development Investment Program. That is a program that we've used in the community numerous times in the past. Most recently, it was with Los Amigos, so we're currently operating a grant for Los Amigos for the expansion of their restaurant front on Main Street. Prior to that, we, we did successfully execute a grant that assisted the Bethlehem Childcare and Rock Bridge. So it is a program that we have talked about at numerous occasions in different committees and boards, and there has been passed resolutions of this very nature before this body in the past. At this point, I'd just like to, let's see, where is the next? I do have a little bit more. I do have a little bit more about the Community Development Investment Grant. I mean, it is largely focused on usually small communities, and we did cover that in the previous meeting where it is directed towards communities that, Karen, where did you see that at? Financially distressed, economically distressed, or an opportunity zone. So, um, so Richland Center does align with that, and so we are eligible for a one-to-one grant versus a two-to-one. So a lot of times in their program, they require for every $2 put in, you'll get one. This is a one, for every dollar put in, they would receive one, as long as it's a, an acceptable expense. So I'll just show you real quick, the, a lot of the imagery here that is projected for the old Gables Building. Of course, a lot of you recognize this icon in our community, and this is some of the conceptual work that's been done to present a new juicery and cafe. This has to go through a two, multiple-step process when we're applying for grants. And the first step is to put together a grant package that includes the indication that there's financial ability to undertake the project. You have to, you have to have plans, photographs like this, you have to have a grant narrative written. And so we have worked with Tony and Darcy from my office. We worked diligently to get this to a place where it could get to a preliminary approval process. So we were successful in submitting it in their preliminary approval process. It goes to a committee at W E D C, they came back and said, "We love the project." If they give you that, not nod wink wink, or nudge nudge wink wink, it means that we have about probably an 85 to 90% chance of the final application being successful. Final application is much more detailed, we're having to answer a lot of questions through W E D C, how can economically benefit the community, you know, who uses it, all of those types of things. And so we're currently working on that. Part of the final grant submission is this resolution. This resolution is basically authorizing the professional staff here at the city to do all the things necessary to get this grant into the final phase and to have it be reviewed by them and hopefully have a grant awarded into the community. Costs associated with the grant are staff time. There are no other expenses that we undertake on their behalf, other than staff time. And so if there are any reporting requirements or things like that, that's something that the LLC would be required to come up with the funds in order to do that. So there is some financial record-keeping that's required, and sometimes it requires an audit. It was asked of me before in the previous meeting where the amount of the grant is, and it's a little bit higher than I had mentioned in the last one, I think it's right at about $200,000. So that is the amount that it would potentially be awarded into the community. So that's a lot of information, hopefully I've done a good job of answering any questions that you could have, but I'm glad to take them if you have them. We do have the McCarthy's here, if, if...
Yeah, please pass the microphone, you bet.
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer anything that you guys might have. First of all, thank you guys for taking the time to even be here and represent our community, and then to also take this on to listen. And to Jason, Darcy, Amanda, Philly, for all the dumpsters and time and caring and everything. And of course, my husband for supporting my crazy life career. I need juice so I don't age so fast. No mother's needed to, so. Any questions that anybody has, I'm happy to answer them. And even if you're wondering what is a juicery and cafe, I'm happy to, whatever it is, or why the name, any questions, I've worked on this for a while.
Hold that microphone. So I first heard about this in March of last year, the vision for the business. And in August, the McCarthy's took me inside the building and already at that point, you could see a tremendous amount of work that had been done in there. And I saw both their vision for the proposed business and the effort they're putting into that building have been very impressive. And you could see me by the brace, she's worrying that the McCarthy's have been kicking butt now. So I would like you to explain this business to the council.
Yeah. So Wild Honey Juicery and Cafe, my background was early on in nursing and then anesthesia as well as my husband. And then when we moved here, and I grew up as a farm girl, and when we moved here, it was decided that I raised the voice, so I kind of stepped back from doing anesthesia and in that process became a health coach, yoga instructor, and lots of other different things along the way, a passion for health and wellness. And it's something that I feel that, you know, can make a big difference for all of us. And to do it in a fun way that we can implement for the whole community, that, you know, we can support local schools, the clubs, the, you know, everybody in the community, a place where we can come together. We have some green space that we're able to use so that we can host, you know, events where we could maybe have, you know, all kinds of fun music events. You know, lots of people in the community have heard them saying, like, where is a space where we could come together and have some music or, you know, some outdoor events, or some farm-to-table events, or bring us together as a community in a time that maybe people do feel that they need some support. So that's kind of where this came from. And then it's also, going back to my roots, a small-town farm girl in North Dakota where I was literally doing sustainable living before I knew it was sustainable, pretty cool. Pressing fruits and roots and canning and, you know, doing all those things that we now know are actually really good for us and to not be, you know, getting all the processed foods. So it's my way of being able to take this on and, you know, serve the community in a way that I feel we can all benefit by coming together and having something healthy mentally and physically and socially and to just connect us. So that's kind of where the vision came from behind all of that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Tony or Brian?
So I do.
Uh-oh, Mr. Chambers.
I always have questions, that's okay. Jason, can you scroll back up to the indoor pictures, right there? Is that what it looks like now?
No, so I would be happy to share pictures, or if people do want to, you know, text me, I could give you a sneak peek. So it's really, really cool. One of the things we wanted to do was preserve the iconic Gable Building for the community because it's been here since 1930s. And so we just really wanted to save that, so we thought, how can we do that and bring something modern? But the building, shockingly, we did not plan to have to renovate to the extent that we did, but we ran into some problems that led us to have to do that. And I'm so grateful for the owners that did what they did, and we miss them dearly. They did a great job there, wonderful people. And so I totally respect all the work that they did, but we understand how expensive it is to really do things. There was some leaking in the roof and all kinds of things because this building, lo and behold, is actually a tin building, that's it. Held by steel structures. So someday, I can't wait to show the community what that looks like. Or like I said, if somebody wants to come in and take a peek, I'm happy to show you now because until we know where we're at with this grant, we can't move any further. And thank you guys for patience for looking at the building the way it is right now. We were driven for Christmas, but I wanted to decorate, you know, put all kinds of fun little things on the windows to, you know, show the community some fun with it. You know, it's a bit of a nice world right now, but it's literally just a tin shed, nothing to it. No insulation or anything, so, yeah.
So that's why you stayed out during Christmas time.
Right, yeah, yeah. There's a, there's a basement.
Yes.
And so there is a little bit of heat going in there just to kind of make sure that it exits out, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments?
I guess the only thing I would have to add to is I'm looking forward to being able to work with the farmers and really, you know, support the farmers and use local everything. The recipes are already put together, everything is all ready to go. It's just a matter of moving forward and everything is made in-house. The smoothies and bowls of all different kinds and soups and gravin' goes. And, you know, eventually I would love to even do like weekly new press for people to make, you know, planning really easy for people to do the best we can to make this a really good thing for the community.
Tony?
Yes?
When, uh, when, when is your date that you hope to open?
Yeah, last year.
An accent. What's Brian's name?
You should have asked Brian.
You know, the grant is one-on-one, so it's hefty. But our goal would be, I mean, this would be an autumn perk goal. I would love to be opening in July. As far as the grant, like, if I'm able to complete together with, you know, all the, with Darcy and Jason and all the people that are involved in making this grant possible, if we could get everything in by the end of next week, possibly the underwriting could be by mid-March and then we can move forward with construction, there would be a chance that we could get this open by summer. Realistically, could be fall, and if Brian can you work any more?
Sounds like a challenge.
Just kidding. I'm trying to work too, so. I'm trying to do the best we can to make this happen as fast as possible, but that would be a lot of the perk goal, so, yeah.
Further questions or comments for Tony or Brian? Okay, I'm going to read this resolution, please, quickly. City of Richland Center Resolution Number 2025, this is dash two, correct?
Yes.
Okay. A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant for the development of Wild Honey Juicery and Cafe by Wild Honey Collective LLC at 212 North Main Street, Richland Center, Wisconsin, 53581. Whereas the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant, W E D C dash CDI program, provides incentives for shovel-ready projects with emphasis on downtown community-driven efforts that should lead to measurable benefits in job opportunities, property values, and/or leveraged investment by local and private partners. And whereas Wild Honey Collective LLC has been diligently working on a business and renovation plan for their location in Richland Center at 212 North Main Street, Richland Center, Wisconsin. And whereas the Wild Honey Collective LLC Business and Renovation Plan appears to align with the criteria and goals of the W E D C dash CDI grant program and will be of benefit to community members. And whereas a resolution by the City of Richland Center authorizing the submission of the grant is a prerequisite for the submission of the CDI grant, now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Richland Center does hereby authorize city personnel to fully execute the necessary steps to complete the application, development agreement, and reporting requirements of this grant. Motion from Mr. Cairns. And a second for Mr. Downs. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call on that one.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Item fifteen, waste management fees.
Do you want me to?
Yes. I love you talking about our tribe.
All right. So, um, we have a five-year contract with Town and Country to service the city for waste management. We bill through utilities, it's currently $12 each home that has garbage service gets billed, up to four units within a dwelling or a building. But that contract goes up 3% every year. There was some discrepancy between the city, previous clerk office employees, and Town and Country on how many homes should be billed for. And so last year, we actually were charged much less than we are going to be now. It's going to go back up $10,000 a month. And we were below budget last year, or above budget, by quite a bit. The fees have not been adjusted in over 10 years. It was 2014, the last time they raised the fees to the public for garbage service, recycling, or even the landfill. And so when we looked at the last two years of average costs, what we're bringing in, what the charges, you know, the revenue versus our costs, we are projecting this next year, we would be without raising costs. Each month, the city would lose over $3,000 just in garbage and recycling fees. And then at the landfill, on average each month, we're losing $1,500, over $1,500. That has been over the past two years. And now our fees are going up more. So we're proposing, right now the fee is $12. We're proposing to go up to $14 per household for garbage and recycling. And then we're proposing the land roll-up, so when, uh, when Town and Country takes the garbage and they have to, like, replace the dumpsters, that's $131 now. And then it's also charged per ton. So we are saying we would like to up our costs to, uh, sorry, Exhibit A. You have a list of fees. And then also... Yeah, sorry, so we're wanting to charge $115 per ton, it was 105. So it's very minimal cost, really, per person. We're also looking at next year, we're going to have to re-contract, whether it's with the same company or another company. We have no idea what the costs are going to be, and so it is better for us to kind of get ahead of it. We won't be underwater each month. But we're also raising the cost now with the anticipation that probably in the future, those costs are going to go up. And so it's better to do that incrementally. And so this will allow us to break even and then kind of be ready for next year when we look at a new contract.
Any questions, comments? If you would repeat, when was the last time fees were raised?
2014.
2014. Thank you.
And then we also are proposing some, in Exhibit A is the fee. Some of those fees for the landfill, like microwaves, televisions, those remain the same, but the minimum cost would go from $10 to $15, and that would just help offset some of that that we're, we're paying as a city.
And the simple explanation is, costs have simply increased and these have not been adjusted in 11 years?
Yes.
All right. It is resolution night here at the City Council. I will read City of Richland Center Resolution 2025-03. Resolution increasing the fees for garbage and trash removal from residential properties and for acceptance of waste materials at the city waste disposal site. Whereas Section 355 dot 10 of the Code of Ordinances provides the fees for city garbage and trash removal from non-commercial properties and tipping fees for waste brought to the city disposal site may be changed from time to time by resolution of the Common Council. And whereas the Common Council last adjusted these fees in 2014, and since that time, the costs associated with providing these essential services have increased. And whereas due to the increased costs, Common Council has determined that it is necessary to revise the current fees for these services, and now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Richland Center, Richland County as follows. One, the following revised fees shall be imposed. A, the fee for garbage and trash removal from non-commercial properties having not more than four dwelling units is increased from $12 to $14. B, the tipping fee for acceptance of garbage, trash, or other acceptable waste materials brought to the city disposal site is increased from $105 per ton to $115 per ton. C, the minimum tipping fee for acceptance of garbage, trash, or other acceptable waste materials brought to the city disposal site is increased from $10 to $15. D, the fee for other waste items shall be as prescribed by Exhibit A attached here too. Two, the foregoing revised fees shall be applicable commencing March 1st, 2025. Motion for Mr. Cairns to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Walters, any discussion?
I have, I have one question, Amanda, that I didn't realize. The Finance, the, uh, the fee for garbage and trash removal for non-commercial properties, properties having not more than four dwelling units. So if there's an apartment, four dwelling units, is that four trash cans? Up to four trash cans?
So if you have like a duplex or a house where there's multiple units in it, if it's four or less, there's some discrepancy in the contract because...
So do they get the four cans for the same price I'm paying for one?
No, they get, per each unit, they pay that amount, the 12 tons.
The reason why there's this distinguishing language is because anyone that has more has to have a private, um... has to have a private contract with Town and Country.
So if it's a duplex or a four unit, they still only get one trash can?
No, it's, it's not about the number of trash cans that you receive, it's about whether or not you can be under the city's garbage service.
Oh, gotcha, because they're getting billed separately for each, all right, perfect.
You can have, like, our house, we have multiple units, generations in one house. So we actually contract independently with Town and Country for additional garbage. But if we actually had an apartment, that person could come, you know, they would have a unit and we would have a unit, then there would be two, but we would each be paying separately for our own.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, we have the motion and the second on this one, is there a discussion? You're not only a roll call.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next, next on the agenda is Public Safety Committee Recommendations in Action, Mr. Kevin Melby.
All right, Public Safety met last night, went over several items. The first would be, number 16 on your list is the Class C Wine License for the German Warehouse. My motion to is approve said license.
Motion for Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, is there a discussion?
Mr. Melby, this is for the 1921 speakeasy.
Billy, the attachment isn't here, that is correct, right? That's the one that we're watching.
The one they just had, they're coming on?
Yes.
Thank you.
So they currently have a B beer license? And so they would be adding a C to that?
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Any hearing not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion is carried.
Number 17, we need the temporary Class B Retailer License for Richland County Performing Out Arts Council at the Front Porch Comedy Show, which is on February 15, 2025, at the Auditorium.
Motion for Mr. Melby, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers, is there a discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion is carried as well.
All right, on the number 18, City Management Veterans Memorial at City Hall. Public Works said, spoke in December and January, but it's not, I see Mr. Frye is here, who's the expert on the subject, if he would like to provide some insight, we would appreciate it.
If we could get the microphone over there to Mr. Frye, please.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. I have my bodyguards with me. Three lovely ladies here. One of them is married to a Marine, one married to an Army veteran, and we have a female committee member who is a veteran.
Who is a veteran.
Who is a veteran. Over the years, there's been a lot of work put into developing plans for and overseeing and building this beautiful memorial. If any of you travel and ever stop at other veterans' memorials, you probably will not see any nearly as nice as this. And it honors over 8,600 veterans that have served from the War of 1812 to the present. We are still adding names. Going back to City Councils, in 2006, they graciously deeded us that parcel of land where the memorial is, because they really couldn't use it for anything else. And we certainly accepted the donation, because we didn't have to go find another place or pay for it. From that point on, it was raising money, accepting any donations we could get, and over 25 committee members worked together from about 2006 until 2015, when most of the construction was done. From that point on, we operated as an executive board with seven members. We seem to be able to get along yet. At one point, we thought we needed financial assistance to insure the memorial, but there was no way we could do it. We approached the city and City Council at that point in time, accepted the memorial. So they were able to cover it under their blanket insurance policy. Shortly thereafter that, there was an incident that would have cost us a fair amount of money. During all this time, the city has allowed us to be involved with the maintenance. And the maintenance consists of keeping the flags flying. There are some weed eradication duties. Sometimes some bird doo-doo has to be washed off some of the memorials. There is not a lot of maintenance required. The city Parks Department has been great about helping up to this point. We have a young lady here that's handled our finances since day one. She's a little reluctant to sign over this little bit of money to the city, but I think we can convince her. All we ask is hopefully, and I know it will happen, that you will care for this memorial as we have, and you have continued to do since you took it over in 2016. If the money could be set aside for maintenance purposes, we would appreciate that. We have researched the procedure for dissolution of 501-3C. I don't think it's gonna take a rocket scientist to get it done. We have already met as a committee and voted to turn these funds over to the city. The original agreement that Jason has up on the board spells it out, that in this bit, that we want to dissolve, give up our 501-3C, it does have to go to another 501-3C or a public entity. So with that in mind, we may need a little technical assistance on some of the wording for what few documents we have to submit. But we certainly would appreciate your endorsement of accepting our donations and of course maintaining this beautiful memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. And I'll tell you that I do get a good number of compliments on the quality and the beauty of our veterans' memorial, and I get some praising our memorial, but I have found that I probably had more comments from people from other communities, once they saw our memorial and visited it, they say things like, man, ours stinks back home, really. This thing, and I'm talking about municipalities of 30, 40, 50,000 people don't have what we have here.
So this is $630,000 sitting over there that this community has donated. You all know what kind of community we live in. And we continually get, we still get donations. First Sunday in March, there's gonna be a dance at the Phoenix Center, Lonnie Berger and his band. They've done this for many years. The net proceeds goes to that memorial for maintenance. So bring your best girl and come to the dance.
There we go.
All right, there is, Jason, did you want to talk briefly about the financial impact? Can you do that?
Yeah, so you do have a cover sheet there where it outlines what Leonard had shared and then some of the deliberations that the Public Works Committee has gone, gone through on this. So Leonard came and presented on December 19th, and at that point, the Public Works Committee asked that we take a closer look with Attorney Wendell at the resolution and the agreement that was crafted and that Leonard referred to back in December 31st of 2006. And so, Michael, if I say anything wrong, you correct me, but defer to his review. You know, we've looked at it, looked at the criteria, the conditions. It is, you know, it is the agreement that the city is to take over this at the point that the team that's, that's currently managing it, the Richland County Veterans Honor Roll, decides to dissolve. So they're at that place where, where they feel like they may like to take that step. Committee has heard it twice, we have reviewed all of the legal elements. And so the, the financial impact is ongoing maintenance and management costs. And as Leonard mentioned, insurance is currently being provided by the city. Funding source, upon the dissolution of R C V M H R, approximately $31,000 would be transferred to the city for the ongoing management of the memorial. So the requested action would be that there's a motion to approve, assuming full management responsibility of the Veterans Memorial upon the formal dissolution of, of the R C V M H R team or LLC and the transference of the funds. Now, this is not like an instantaneous thing, this is something that we will have to work with the city attorney on, we'll have to work with the team and to make sure that that happens appropriately. It seems that would be appropriate to set up a fund, this administrator, that, that has that money set aside. So there are a number of things that we have to do. And this would basically, the request is that you would pass this motion in order that we could continue to take steps forward to do, to fulfill their request.
Thank you, Jason. So with all that information, I will make the motion to approve, assuming full management responsibility of the Veterans Memorial upon formal dissolution, the R C V M H R transfer.
Motion for Mr. Melby, is there a second? Second from Mr. Downs, further discussion? It looks like here there's approximately $31,000 that will be transferred once this is completed, does that sound right?
Yes.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Financial impact to the city?
Well, well, initially it ends up in a fund balance of $31,000. There is ongoing, again, insurance costs that we've already covered, but there, there are likely going to be maintenance fees associated with maintaining it, and we would draw upon that balance. I think, Leonard, you, you kind of shared with me before roughly some of the maintenance costs that you had to undertake under your care?
Yes, each, each year we spend about $1,000 for flags. We put them up as soon as we can in the spring and April, we take them down after Veterans Day. Last year, we discovered a problem with the front wall from the big arch south to the handicap ramp was tipping out. After some checking with local contractors, we did spend $11,000 to have that wall completely torn out, the base reset properly, the wall put back, and everything substructure built out from it. Also, about the end of February last year, I was there with an individual concerning something in any way. He reaches, puts his hand in one of the large panels on the donor wall, and that panel moved in and out like this. So it's 30 inches wide, seven feet tall. Probably $20,000 or $30,000 to replace it. So we did go through a lengthy process, but it has since been repaired to a cost of $800. So last year, we spent close to $12,000 on the maintenance of the memorial. Hopefully, it's a very remote case, but it is something that could happen again. Again, that's where the Parks Department, maintenance people are gonna have to check it once in a while and be sure there's no problems. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing not, I'd like a roll call on that one.
Tepley. McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next up, Park Board Recommendations in Action, Mr. Mark Chambers.
So Parks Department met on the 25th of November, and we were looking into approving for the June 28, 2025 Thunder Fest to get a fireworks company to help us out with that. We looked into Chrome Fireworks Displays LLC, and our, the financial impact is $17,000. Again, there was a $500 donation from Allied Machinery that was accepted, so the total cost would be $16,500 for the fireworks display. Funding source would come from Community Center Fireworks Budget Item plus the accepted donation. Park Board had a motion to recommend that the Finance Committee approve the 2025 contract with Chrome Fireworks and Displays LLC, and approve the permit to possess and display fireworks and to pay the $7,500 down payment to secure the show date. Finance did so, and the motion for this evening for the council is to approve the 2025 contract with Chrome Fireworks and Displays LLC, and approve the permit to possess and display fireworks and to pay the $7,500 down payment to secure the show date.
That is your motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second? Second from Mr. McCarthy, is there a discussion? Hearing not, I'd like a roll call on that one.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next up, Planning Commission Recommendations in Action, can we get the microphone to Matt? Okay, Adam Dorni, is application on dental, tire, and auto for conditional use permit to allow an auto repair garage or facility at 243 East Court Street, tax parcel ID 276-2100-0930. This is a business that has been in that location for several years, is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
And what happened here, I believe, is that their conditional use permit expired?
That is correct.
You became aware of that and notified them that they need to renew?
Yes.
Okay. Concerns, comments?
So I have been in contact with the tenant of the property. So he was in violation of ordinance with just the vehicles, extra parts. We did send that notice violation out, which is attached in your guys' pamphlet there. He did respond, he did fill out the conditional use permit that was expired, and he has been working very diligently to clean that up. There was quite a bit there. I would say he's probably got half to three-quarters of that cleaned up. I did go over there this afternoon and touch base with him again. He's trying to get it cleaned up. I did talk to him a little bit, and I guess my recommendation would be to approve a contingent that he'll come in compliance within the week, which would be February 11th. Right now, he's not in compliance, but like I said, he had a lot there, he does have a good start on cleaning it up. The weather's been kind of battling a little bit with the cold and whatnot, so that would be my recommendation for this one.
Okay. I was not in attendance at this last Plan Commission, I'm not needing my help in Madison that day. All the persons, Tepley and Cairns are members as well, they were in attendance, so I will refer to Karen or Ryan, any discussion that was had on this in that meeting, and then I'm assuming since it's on the agenda, then it was recommended for approval.
That is correct.
Okay, anything that you would like to add from, from that meeting, discussion that took place, or concerns that you might have? took place, or concerns that you might have?
I guess the only thing I would say is that what we approved was to have him in compliance by this meeting date. So there is, you know, we've granted him some leeway on getting that cleaned up. And then we did have a gentleman that was in for the public hearing and talked about an alleyway.
Yeah, and I was going to touch base on that as well. So I did get ahold of the county, they did register due fees. They did determine that there was not ever a alleyway recorded there. That was when it was originally planted and in the 1951 plat that they go off of for all their surveys and everything. So it has never been a public alleyway there, so I'm assuming that it was maybe just neighbor common courtesy.
Okay. I don't have a layout in front of me, but it made it sound like there is an area in front of a doorway that is, you know, that they could not access.
Yeah.
That's the main concern there is, will that person have access to their storage?
So the way that shed was built, it actually faces going into the Bindle parking lot. I did send it out, Ron did email me earlier with the concern. I did send a GIS picture to him. Just a poor design, I guess, on how that garage is set. They do have access to it, it just, it's goofy how it's set up, I guess. It's on their property, they have room to get out. I think they're just going to have to kind of do some arrangements on their fence that they have up there to be able to use that. I think they had a mower back there, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Right, yeah, as I recall. So the lot line there does give the party room to move out of there?
Yeah, yeah. The garage is set back far enough. J.C., it's at.
Is that GIS?
No, I'm not in the fire station. Here we go. There you go.
So this, right here's the alleyway that's being discussed, can you see it?
Correct.
And the garage would be this right here?
Yes.
But the entry to the garage is from right here?
Correct.
Which probably most convenient if you're coming from like an alley, but technically, can you put the parcel line in or that's?
I'm in, I'm in GIS, or not in GIS, monitor and get there.
But technically, since it's not a public alley, the parcel line is private property on both sides. So for this individual with the garage to access their garage from those locations, they'd be coming from private property into their garage. So the fact that the garage was built in that spot opening to that is a problem or a challenge.
I thought it was under the church.
Yes.
Yeah, so the church is to the south there.
Yeah, the church actually owns that house and that garage as well.
Where's the church at?
Right there.
Oh, yeah.
And then they own that, and that garage is the one that they were worried about.
The alleyway is where Ashley was pointing, the supposed?
Yeah, the alleyway, the supposed alleyway is between these two buildings, but then...
I understood that coming from the south, if you move the map off, off of Seminary Street, trying to get through that driveway back to that garage.
So there's no longer, there's not a driveway here? And that property line actually goes right alongside the church and goes right up close here. Like I said, here's where that garage and stuff is, and that's got to be cleaned out. But the property line for the church goes right up through this area here.
So what was the date you gave them for compliance?
Next Tuesday, February 11th.
When it was supposed to be tonight?
Yeah, they have a lot of stuff there. I just see a lot of progress being made.
It sounds like the, who was talking about rules and laws before?
That was.
So this would be a situation where it is preferential to the city and the community that we seek voluntary compliance rather than issuing citations or going to court. And so what Matt has described is that there is an individual he's working with that has been voluntarily complying. Has he hit the timeline as prescribed? No, but since additional effort is needed and that individual is willing to participate in that, then it would be fiscally more responsible for the city to pursue that as well as probably better for relations.
Can I ask how they've not had a permit since 2021? How does that happen?
I'm guessing that there's not a full time?
Exactly, it's very simple.
That's why, that's why.
No, I, yeah. It is. I guess it was a zoning administrator. There's actually quite a few properties like this in the city of Richmond Center, and that's kind of what going through the histories and kind of following up on this stuff, that's where all these conditional use permits that have been coming through are actually coming from. It's just, you know, as we're going through the processes, we're finding these, and we're just getting everybody up to compliance.
That was the answer I was asking.
Okay, so Matt, you feel confident that this property owner is working to improve conditions down there, and you've given him a deadline about the 11th?
Yes.
And you believe that will be hit?
I hope.
I didn't ask you that. Are you confident?
I think so.
Okay. If that deadline is not met?
So if the deadline is not met at that point, this is where Matt would work with either Michael or Billy and pursue the issuance of citations and things like that.
And that would go on until they are in compliance.
Yeah. Billy, do you have any concerns with this? None, okay. Okay, at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the application of Bindle Tire and Auto for a conditional use permit to allow an auto repaired garage or facility at 243 East Court Street, Tax Parcel ID 276-2100-0930.
So?
Motion from Mr. Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
Second from, was that Mr. Downs? Is there further discussion?
Should we be waiting until compliance is?
Mr. Wendell?
Certainly, it's an option for the council to move to postpone this action until its next meeting to check the status of compliance. He's not going to be any more in violation than he already is. But I do agree with Administrator LaVon, voluntary compliance is always the first option. It seems like he's making a good faith effort, and it sounds like he'll, he would make either deadline. But I do think it would be easier if he were to fall short if a permit had not been issued rather than issuing a permit and then trying to take it back if he fails to meet that deadline.
So you believe there's benefit in pausing and making sure this deadline is hit, or is it better to pursue the, allow this, and then we get into the situation of citations and so forth?
So in the event that enforcement action would need to be pursued, if we were to issue the conditional use permit tonight, it would confuse the issue. So with a zoning ordinance, any, every day of violation is a different violation. It's not necessarily that I pursue, you know, every day from 2021 for math purposes alone. But if we gave the permit, if it should come to a point where it were before the judge, certainly an argument could be made. Well, on February 4th, I did have a permit, so from then until whenever that permit gets revoked, I was in compliance, even though the conditions of the conditional use permit were not met. It just muddies the water. So, you know, certainly hope for the best, prepare for the worst. It would make my job easier if you were to postpone this until next meeting so that we can ensure that the gentleman comes into compliance.
So as you stated, he won't be in any more, more out of compliance than he currently is because he currently is. So there's no concern if this is, this conditional use permit is not granted tonight, there's no reason he can't continue to operate that business in the interim?
To Alder's, Melby's point, he's been doing it since 2021, so I, you know, scout's honor, I will not tack on the additional month it takes if he makes the good faith effort. If it comes to an enforcement action, it just simplifies matters and streamlines them if and when that enforcement action does come.
Okay, then therefore, it sounds like your advice is for the council to postpone action on this until he's in compliance down there in accordance with the direction he's been given by the zoning director.
My recommendation would be to postpone until your next meeting. If he's not in compliance by that point, then I think we have bigger issues and we'd be looking towards enforcement anyway.
Okay, I will ask the individual who made the motion if he would like to change your motion to postpone it till the next council meeting to ensure compliance.
I'll make that motion to postpone till the next meeting.
Would the second also like to amend?
Second, yes.
Okay, motion and second are in to postpone until the next meeting to ensure compliance. Any discussion? Hearing now, let's have a roll call.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Karens.
Aye.
Ruth.
Aye.
Tepley. Aye. Motion is carried.
Okay, and number 21, I will never pronounce, I'll pronounce this right, Application of Guru Ramdasha LLC for a conditional use permit to allow an auto repaired garage or facility at 789 Sextonville Road, Tax Parcel ID 276-2100-7581. Matt, what's going on in this one?
All right, same thing, just kind of following a period of vacancy. Business began operating from the subject property. Came to the attention of myself after reviewing the records, he was operating without a conditional use permit. He's looking to operate an auto entire repair shop there. He did fill that out. Everything looks good. He wasn't in really any violation besides operating without a conditional use of the property in question. I know that there's some, at one time, there was some kind of garbage and auto parts out front again. We did talk to him, he did get that taken care of, and now he's back into compliance since he applied.
So I see the street address, help me out, where is this?
Behind TKS.
Behind TKS?
Yeah, just either car lot that I think the G O E's.
I know where it is, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so this business has never had a permit?
They have, yeah, they did. So the building has not this business. So this business is actually Shamrock Services, so it's a new business that's going in here.
Okay, but has he already opened and begun doing business something?
Yeah.
Without a permit?
Mm-hmm.
So he's never had a permit for this business?
Correct.
Okay. Again, I'll defer to Karen and Ryan, discussion that was had at Planning, and your thoughts?
Like I said, I guess it was just as Matt had said, there had certainly been enough items in and around the shop that were of compliance. There was no, we did not have anybody here from the public on this one.
Nor business owner?
Yeah, nor business owner. I guess I'll just add, as I was going by yesterday, there is auto, some sort of, you know, auto work being done just out on the driveway, not within the building. In fact, the car was up on some kind of pillars that look like just metal pillars, not like ramp stands or anything. I don't know, looked a little dangerous to me. So I don't know. Is that allowed to actually do the auto mechanic work?
Matt?
Sorry.
Matt, do you have pictures of when you surveyed these properties for us?
I don't know, no, I didn't.
That would probably be a good thing in future, pictures of the current state survey that you can show us so we know what we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay. So the person applying for the permit did not show up at Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
The business owner? And nobody from the public did either?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there, is there a slot to repair cars inside a building there?
Kinda, I don't know, that's a tiny.
There is a very small bay, very small, and you do have to drive up on like ramps. There's no hoist in there or anything, so that was definitely outside.
So back to Karen's question, is, are repairs allowed outside?
I don't think so. Karen, what you saw outside on that property or anybody else, anything blocking the sidewalk? It's not far from the sidewalk?
No.
I mean, it's a, okay. Mr. Chambers?
Well, I just have, just got to clarify, Matt, you're saying that there are no repairs that can occur outside the building?
I guess it's not a condition, so if we put it as a condition, then he would have to apply for that, so we could put it as a condition.
The reason I'm asking is that, I mean, if you're, let's say, changing a tire, that doesn't have to be done inside the building because if it's dropped off, you need the tire replaced, it's hard to get that car with no tire into the building.
Right.
And then back out of the building. Well, back out of the building would be easier, it's got a tire on it. But to get it in, that's going to be difficult. That's why I asked. Why couldn't there be any repairs done outside the building, on the property?
I think it's more along like, we went through this on a place just down the streets from there, they were actually taking like motors out, doing more of the full strip down of vehicles and repairs outside versus, you know, if they're just doing a little tire work or trying to get it repaired enough to get in. I'm not, I'm not sure, I've never seen that, so I can't really verify what they were doing there.
I'll defer the question to Mr. Wendell. Can we have the legalese for this one?
So the ordinance does say that within the conditional use down, or central downtown central business district, no structure or land shall be used for any of the following uses except with a conditional use permit. And then it talks about an auto repaired garage or facility. So when the ordinance was passed, it was contemplated that these functions would not necessarily need to occur in a structure. And so my interpretation would be that while keeping an automotive outdoors may subject you to potentially violations of our parking ordinances or other ordinances, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibits that work from taking place outside, coming from someone whose dad repaired classic cars for a living. Just, I hope that the gentleman is being safe in propping those cars up because whether or not it's a violation of the zoning ordinance, if something goes wrong with a prop stand, it's only him that will suffer, so. But no, legally, there is nothing prohibiting the work from taking place outside. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Matt, anything you want to add on this?
Oh.
Okay, so again, it's on the agenda, it was recommended to the council from Planning. Matt, concerns here at all on this? Just so I know where you're at on this, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve application for a conditional use permit to allow an auto repaired garage or facility at 789 Sextonville Road, Tax Parcel ID 276-2100-7581. Again, that's Guru Ramdasha LLC. I'll make that motion. Have a motion from Mr. Chambers, is there a second? Okay, I'll ask one more time, we've got a motion from Mr. Chambers, is there a second on this one? Okay, there is not. You'll need to notify the business owner, the council did not approve, okay?
Yeah, so when I do inform them that, what is the decision based upon?
I'll draft something, writing it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next we have, on the agenda, we have, committees, commissions, boards to confirm appointments. Okay, I don't have any tonight, but I do have an opening on the housing authority. I got a written resignation from Mr. Terry Teslin, resigning from the housing authority. So we'll need one person on that, work on that for the next meeting. Okay, next is public comment, no council action will be taken on any matter originating under this item. Is there anyone who would like to address the council, have not been made aware of anyone who would? All right, before we move to the next item, I just want to make a mention here, get it on video, when we did the vote tonight to get the robotic mower, Mr. Wendell was in my left ear suggesting perhaps a public contest to name the mower. When do we get it, when do we believe we'll have this product about?
I don't, I don't have a deadline, I would say spring of the year, two or three months.
I don't, I don't have a deadline, I would say, spring of the year, two or three months.
Okay.
And while I think the suggestion is fun, I just suggest that I probably have better things to invest my time in.
You don't have to judge. That's one, we just give that stuff to the administrator, don't do that. All right, all right.
I don't really want to be involved.
Right, yeah.
I'm staying, I'm staying.
Fungracing.
There you go. Okay, next on the agenda, closed session, Financial Officer and Public Investment of Funds. Twenty-two, the chair may entertain a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and e deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed?
I'll make the motion.
Chambers, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Melby? Okay, all in favor of going into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are now closed session.